Right now, at thirty seconds to four.
All right.
That's good.
Okay. Gentlemen, I'd like to, I'd like for you to approve the minutes of November 5th, please.
Make a motion to approve the minutes of the November 5th regular Board of Selectments meeting.
Okay. And Greg, you agree?
Yes, I do.
As do I. They're approved. Okay. Look at this, how timing. You gentlemen, I believe, have an application, a letter from Ms. Sarah Zidzik. And for those that do not know her, she is, teaches at the Academy, very involved in the community, very involved with students in the community, has done some terrific things on behalf of the Academy with students, and recently has been doing a lot of work with the Arboretum. And she's applying to be appointed as a full member of the Arboretum Committee. So, gentlemen, how do you feel about that?
I move we do it.
Okay.
I agree. And Sarah, I'd just like to say thanks for your attached letter. A lot of times, we just get people that fill in the blanks and a little explanation, especially since I've never met you, is helpful. So, thank you very much for that.
And I agree also. And Sarah, thank you for your willingness to be involved and your dedication, well, your dedication in your various positions for the school. Always impressed and very impressed with your students and their dedication to community service, volunteerism, and that sort of thing. So, thank you for your willingness to serve on this committee.
Thank you. Thank you for letting me.
Okay. Gentlemen.
Vote on that, right?
Uh, yes.
Okay.
You moved.
I moved it, so.
All right, Chan?
I'm in.
All right, you second, I'll third. All in favor? Unanimous?
Aye, aye.
Okay. Good. Thank you. Gentlemen, not to belabor the issue. And you're all wondering, having looked at the, "Consider revising the 2021 transfer station permit to run on a calendar year, not fiscal." I know what you're thinking, "Why are we doing this?" And I know that it was in the minutes, we had a lot of discussion in our last meeting. Let me explain what's going on and why I reached, actually, I did send you emails, I believe, one night, to explain what the issue was. What the issue is this, we're trying to get the transfer station on a fiscal year. This has been going on forever. It's on a calendar year. It creates problems for John Navarro in figuring out budgets, in figuring out hauling and tipping fees, in a variety of other issues with the transfer station. So, after we did all of our work two weeks ago, I decided to pull the plug on it. And the reason is this, people are gonna show up, people are gonna get excited, and they're gonna get their new, they're gonna pay, and they're gonna get their new brochure, and they're gonna be all excited because of how inexpensive it is. Then what's gonna happen is, they're gonna show up six months later, "What do you mean? I just paid the fee." Well, yes, ma'am, it's for six months. I always pay for a year. Why is it anyway? It's gonna be too confusing. The other problem is, they're gonna realize this at the time that they come, around the first week of July, to pay their taxes on motor vehicles. So, it's kind of a double whammy, and it's not gonna go over well. So, we also do not know, because we're not in our budget season yet, what may happen next year. We've had three years of level taxes to the town, very unusual. We've kept it at the 20.5 mil rate. So, I figured... What?
Twenty-four point five, isn't it?
Uh, yeah. What did I say?
Twenty.
Oh, twenty-four point five. Okay. So, I just, I was thinking about this one night, and I said, "This is not gonna work. This is not the year to do it." So, what I'd like to go back to is the original figures that we had figured out, which I believe you have a copy, do you not? On the twelve-month figures?
Somewhere.
Are they in your folders?
No, it's not in the folder.
No, but it's in the, it's in the folder from the last meeting, I think.
Okay.
I'm trying to pull that out, from the November 5th meeting. Look, if I look in there, it might be in there.
Okay.
Jay, is it because you're concerned that there might be an increase in taxes this coming year?
That's part of it.
Okay, 'cause I guess, I guess my point is, this has been talked about forever, and it's gonna be, it's, it's gonna make people angry one year or another year.
This may not be the year to do it. And the reason, honest to goodness, the reason, one of the reasons I say this is COVID. And the reason I say that is, we at the Town Hall and in the town of Woodstock, we're dealing with the second surge. It's creating major problems with the schools. It's creating major problems with restaurants. It's just another stressor for taxpayers, and that's one of my concerns. And I don't, between us, I don't see next year as being any better. I know that they are, I had information at a meeting I was at the other day, that there will be a vaccine available in late December. There will be a priority for emergency workers. We, in our geographic area, I do not believe we're gonna have access to the Pfizer vaccine. And the reason for that is, the Pfizer vaccine has to be stored at an extremely low temperature. And we do not have, in Eastern Connecticut, the facilities to store that. There would have to be special freezers purchased to do that. So, the other vaccine, and I apologize, I don't have the name for it, but again, if you watch the news any night, you can find out what it is.
Jay, it's Moderna.
Moderna. Okay, thanks, Greg. Anyway, I think that's what we're gonna have available to us. They're looking at the end of December. But Chan, getting back to your initial comment about possibility of taxes going up, we just don't know. It's, it, we are gonna have to switch over, and John and I agree on this. I'm just not sure that this is the year to do it.
Okay, well, if you wanna go back to the other program, I'm okay with that for this cycle, but when it comes to budget time, let's have this conversation again, and make sure that we try and budget accordingly moving forward, to make the switch next year.
Okay, yes.
That would be this time next year, something like that?
Yes. But we have to make the, there would have to be a transition. It would have to be initially a six-month period, and then go to twelve months fiscally.
Right.
But I know, it's human nature, people are gonna come in and be all excited about what a deal this is, and they're not gonna read it. We, Brenda and I were going back and forth on how to have the print done in such a way, so that when you look at the cover, it tells you it's only for six months. And we know downright well, it's, it's gonna happen, that people are gonna be extremely angry when they realize. And then, we're gonna be accused of taking advantage of them, and they think that, you know, we were trying to pull a fast one, which is not true. We're looking out for their best interest, but by the same token, I can tell you the expenses of the tipping fees and hauling fees for the town keep going up every year. One of the other problems is, at some point in the past, we used to make money. We didn't make a big profit, but we could sell plastic, we could sell tin cans, we could sell paper. Those days are gone. And we do, I believe there is some materials that come out of our transfer station that we do receive remuneration for, but there's a, for instance, the plastics that used to go overseas, nobody wants it anymore. So, we're stuck with it, and we're, we're in the process of dealing with a program with DEP on trying to get rid of bulky waste and also plastics, because it's gonna be with us, you know, forever. Anyway, I, you know, I could go on for a while, but it was just, when I sent you gentlemen that email the other night, it was like, you know, "What are we doing and why are we doing?" And that's why I explained it to you in the email. So.
So, do we need a motion?
Yes, I, yes, we do need a motion that we will, we will go with the increase in fees, but for the 21, 22, uh, I'm sorry.
Calendar 21.
Twenty-twenty-one, uh, year, we will go with the increase in fees.
It's, it's just, it's just the calendar 21?
Yes.
Right? Not twenty-twenty-one?
No, it's, well, it's twenty-twenty-one, I mean, twenty-twenty-one.
Twenty, yeah, 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 yeah. I was thinking twenty hyphen twenty-one.
No, 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 no.
Two zero, two one, that year, yeah. Yes.
So, next year, January to December?
I'm with you.
Okay.
Gotcha.
I, I do need someone to move on that in a second. Okay, Greg, so move. Chan?
I'm in.
Okay, me too. And I apologize, 'cause, um, well, actually, I was thinking, you guys didn't put that much time into this. So, I guess I'm apologizing myself, because Brenda and Crystal and myself, this was a major project, and I just threw it out the window for the best of good reasons, so. Okay, let's move on. You'll be happy about this, gentlemen. We have no tax rebates.
Good.
Okay. Correspondence and announcements. Okay, in your folders, you will see, there's two graphics. One I got off of, or actually, Crystal got off of Connecticut website. And these are things, the five, this is primarily for restaurants and places that deal with the public. Five precautions we're taking to protect you, five actions you can take to protect us. So, I've taken that brochure, that brochure, if you will, along with a sheet that came from the Hartford Current last Sunday, that shows coronavirus in Connecticut and the sources of community clusters. And if you notice, number one is restaurants. And then it goes on down the line. Anyway, we put this together as a brochure, and I've been visiting various restaurants and places open to the public over the last couple of weeks, talking to people, talking, giving them suggestions for design of their dining rooms, what to remove from bars, how to set up every other table, et cetera, et cetera. Just because we're in a spike right now, I'm afraid it's gonna get worse. I was speaking to Polly Hayden this morning at Sweet Evs. She is concerned and asked me, "Is the governor gonna shut us down again?" And I honestly, I don't have an answer for that, but I'm concerned, because if you look at nationwide maps, everybody is in the same boat, and it's not good. So, this, the graphics I gave you, I just felt it gave me a way to come in and talk to various owners in town. And I'm trying to be supportive of them, and I'm on their side, but they've also said to me that some of these graphics, they're gonna be posting in their places of business for their employees to pay attention. And it gives them some firm guidelines. Most, we've been very fortunate, most people and everybody in town has been very proactive, whether it's Linda Oger or the Hayden's or others, and they've been terrific through this whole thing. But I'm just trying to prevent problems down the road, because we have been very fortunate in town. Um. Okay. Under... Also, this is correspondence. Greg, this is specific to you, but all of us, I just, you got a copy of a letter. I followed up with a report today. I had followed up on a letter that Mike Alberts had sent. I had sent a follow-up last January, and this regarding, this is regarding the lights down at 171, 169. And you can see from the letter, they've got it on their radar. The project is anticipated to be, to be completed, designed in 2023. We were told that we'd be part of the design phase. So, anyway, that's just a follow-up on things that we've talked about in the past.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
You're welcome. Also, you got a letter, a letter, you got a list. We're gonna go to a public auction, and I can't tell you the date. So, if you want an 11-foot Viking plow with a power angle for your own home, you'll be invited, or you'll know when this auction's gonna take place. These are the things, it's surplus equipment from the town garage. John and I have been going back and forth, and we'll be announcing soon, this will be advertised soon, to get rid of this, this equipment that we no longer need.
Is this gonna be an online auction, Jay?
I do not know. I honestly, I don't know. Now, if it's in person, I would assume, A, it's gonna be at the town garage, and B, they're gonna have to do proper, you know, masks and social distance and that sort of thing. But I don't know. John didn't mention online, so I don't know. Okay.
I'm sure part of the, part of any, any auction, whether it's online or in person, includes a period when the potential bidders could inspect the equipment?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
But again, I, you know, I don't know. Other than John came up with the list, we talked about it yesterday. He gave it to Brenda, and then I think it has to be advertised. And I'm not sure, you know, what the regulations are as far as advertising, you know, but so many days before, it has to be in, you know, so many papers. I don't know. But if any of you are interested in that 11-foot Viking plow, when the ads come out, I'll let you know when it is.
Actually, you can own two.
That's true. You're, you're right. Okay, that's, that's what I have pretty much for announcement and correspondence, but I may have forgotten something. Oh! Didn't I send the email out on that? Okay. No, I sent an email to you gentlemen about no town meeting, and I left a phone message at the home of Ms. Dawn. So, I, okay. Wait, hold on. Sorry. No, go ahead.
So, are we doing it by Zoom? Is that how? No?
Zoom what?
Like a Zoom, I mean, I mean, the executive orders?
Yes.
Okay.
Oh, yeah. And again, this is for the public. Again, the two selectmen and Dawn know this. For the general public, and I don't, the general public didn't know that we were planning a town meeting. So, I don't have to make an announcement to the general public. It was our, you know, we had been talking about it because of the need for it. But again, as I told you with the email, which I neglected to bring a copy with me. But as I told you in the email, this was through research we had done in consultation with Rich Roberts, that most of the things that we had to do, and this was development rights to the farm and some other things, most could be done under executive orders, which have also been, which had also been, we, we just didn't feel, again, with this spike in COVID, that it was a smart thing to have a town meeting in person in, you know, in mid-December, so. And I'm, I'm looking, I was just candid. This just came in nine minutes ago. Today's Thursday. We went from orange back to red. We were orange, I was thrilled. We went to red. Then we went back to orange, and then we went back to yellow, and I was all excited, but I've just been handed a map. The whole state, other than a few towns here and there, is red. And again, this just, you know, I'm just saying to you, these are my concerns about town meetings, why I'm visiting restaurants, you know, and that sort of thing. And I, you know, I expressed to anybody that will listen, that my personal issues with this is people are either lazy, or they're not taking it seriously enough. And we've had issues, as you're all aware, of students from the Academy. The Academy was going back to two days a week, and they, they were in, the students at the Academy were in on Monday, and then they pulled the plug on Tuesday, because apparently there was a party in Pompet, and a number of students were out there, no masks, no social distancing. And there are a number of students from Woodstock and NFA and Killingley that apparently go together at a soiree south of us, again, with no precautions. And, you know, it's with us, it's gonna stay with us, and unfortunately, I'm afraid it's gonna get worse, so. There you have it. Okay, public comments, please? Dawn?
I just wanna, I just wanna thank you all for the, the great amount of work you did to figure out the best way and the safest way to proceed with the, the town's authorization of the release of funds to purchase the development rights of Maple Crest. So, so, thank you for that. I notified Cam Wymer, who's the Director of the Farm Line Preservation Program with the Department of Agriculture, and, and he was very encouraged, and he said, "That's great. The sooner the vote can take place, the better." So, so, thank you for making this happen.
You're welcome. And again, Dawn, as I told you throughout this whole process, it was a priority for us.
Yep.
But again, we, God, you know, it's not business as usual.
No, no, not for any of us. But, but if you would like the Open Space Committee in general, or me in particular, to do anything, to release any statements, to, you know, contact the press to say how much we appreciate your going forward with this, just, just let us know. You can let us know through Chan, since he's an active member of the committee, and we'll do what, what, what needs to be done.
All right, thank you. We'll, we'll let you know as this develops. I think the intent right now is that we will address this at the first meeting in December.
Okay.
Along with some other issues that we're gonna do, you know, we're gonna address under executive orders. A number of the other issues that I had, and I think I've expressed to all of you at some point, I had like 11 items that normally go to a town meeting. And I think we've kind of whittled them down to eight, and a number of those can wait until we can actually have an, a town meeting, be it in the spring or whatever. But again, you know, listen, don't bet on it, and as much as we're all hopeful, I, I don't think next year is gonna be much better than this year.
I agree, Jay, but I, at this point, I would like to just concentrate on the time-sensitive issues.
Absolutely. And, and that's, and I had already talked to you, after we made this decision not to have a town meeting, but to move forward, especially for the release of funds, I had contacted Mike Dougherty, and I told him what we were doing, and I said that we will address this in our first meeting of December. I know, and I can't, I wanna say December 7th or 6th. The Board of Finance has a meeting. The 8th, December 8th.
Sure, sure, you should know, yeah.
Yeah, it's the 8th.
Okay, so, we will address, we will do our, we've already approved, so it's just a formality. And then, but I've already told Mike, and so that it will be ready for your first meeting, if you will, in November, or your monthly meeting in November. December, I'm sorry.
It's okay.
So. All right, so we should be good.
Does this have to be warned or posted, like a standard town meeting, even though it's gonna be done under the executive order?
I do not believe so. Because, but we do have to cite in minutes, and in any publication, I think we have to cite as, "Under executive order XYZ, you know, we are doing this, this situation." I'm looking at a thing right now from Rich Roberts. Okay, now, this is, this is from Rich, I'm quoting him. And this is an email that we, we just received. Looking at the executive orders, I would suggest that notices of the proposed actions get posted on the website in advance. So, we will be posting on the town website. But I do not think that we have to go to, like, legal notices in a newspaper and that sort of thing. I think just town website would be fine.
I, I might check that with Rich. He uses that term "posted" to mean legal.
Okay.
Not the way we, not the way you and I might use it. He uses it in a legal faction.
Okay, we'll follow up with him. But again, Chan and Dawn, this, that open space situation and that, you know, development rights, it's a priority for us, and we recognize it, so we're trying to do everything we can.
And, and the committee, the committee recognizes that the, the Board of Selectmen are fully in support of this, and have been working hard to, to move things forward. So, again, thank you. The committee does know, we did, I did let people know at our regular November meeting that you were planning a town meeting. And so, I will let the committee know that that plan has been changed, and that you're going to do this at a regular BOs meeting, and that they should, should zoom in, so that they can see it happen.
Okay.
And I will let the landowner know as well.
Okay, thank you. Charlene?
I, I'm really glad that this has been clarified this way, because I was really concerned that we were thinking of having a town meeting when the governor's mandates were that people couldn't have gatherings of more than X number of people in their own home or in their own property. And the thought that you might have to enforce that, and at the same time, hold a public town meeting, on the other hand, I thought was going to be a whole barrel full of trouble. So, kudos.
Actually, Charlene, this, this is the issue. If you have a party at your house, you are limited to the number of people. These, that limitation by the government, governor does not apply to municipalities. And in fact, there was a town meeting in Western Connecticut, I cannot remember the town. I think it was Bristol, come to think of it. There was a town meeting on an athletic field. And they held it because they had to do it for whatever reason, but they used the PA system, and they had people spread out in chairs all over an athletic field. So, yeah, but I just, again, you know, doing the right thing, I guess, in the sense that we are not bound by what the, municipalities are not bound by what the citizens are for, like, private parties, weddings, and that sort of thing. But by the same token, I recognize that the danger and the significance of, of people being together. So, we just decided...
I also think you've been very sensitive about the situation with residents having to pay for the transfer station permit, and then their property taxes and that kind of thing. Even if it was totally above board, I think this would have been an opportunity for a great deal of misunderstanding. And I, I think that it's so much better that it's handled this way.
Charlene, do you mean, what, do you mean it, there would have been a lot of misunderstanding because of the six months, and then going to the 12-month?
No, I meant that your sensitivity about the timing on the transfer station permit.
Oh, okay.
I think, I mean, even though it could have been perfectly above board and fine, you are very sensitive to the way people might take it. That's my point in the town meeting versus, you know, private gatherings thing. It doesn't matter if it's above board or not. People would misunderstand, and we really don't need to have a big hassle over it.
I understand. Thank you.
Jay, would it be possible to put together some kind of a sheet to include in this year's dump permits, explaining that it's probably gonna happen next year? Maybe try and prepare people for what's coming down the pike? I don't wanna put an extra burden on everybody, but if it's...
No, 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 no. I, I think we could do it. My fear is this, since it's just us together here, my fear is this, no matter what we do, people aren't gonna get it. And again, Brenda and I went back and forth for days, trying to figure out how to put it on the brochure, so that people would understand it's only six months. And Chan, you're, I agree with you, and yes, we can do that. I just think that people don't read things.
At least, at least you're doing, you're doing your due diligence by giving them a heads up, and then they'll get another heads up when they go to get the permit the following year, so. You know, that's about all you can do.
I know, but I, yeah, yes, we will do that in answer to your question. I just don't have a lot of faith in people reading, you know, reading things, you know? I, I, but yes, we will do that.
Can't hurt.
Oh, absolutely.
Do they, Jay?
Yeah.
Do, refresh me here. Do they, does town send out a renewal to the people that have a dump permit, or do you just put a, a notice out there that dump permits are now... people have a dump permit or do you just put a, a notice out there that dump permits are now available?
Greg, Greg.
And I have.
You've never had one?
I had, no, no, I have one. I don't remember, I don't remember if I got a renewal in the mail.
No, Greg, we don't send renewals.
Okay.
I will, I will personally call your house if you wish to remind you. No, sir, I'm, 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 no, seriously, no, we don't do renewals.
All right. But, but, but the, but the thing that Chan's talking about, you could actually go in the tax bills too. Just, it's just an informational thing about the dump, the transfer station.
No, I understand that, but I don't want to put the tax bills, you know, with, with, increase the cost of postage. What I think we will probably do in addition to putting it on the brochure, as Chan suggested, um, that, you know, there will be, we are going to transition next year and explain, we, we don't want to get into fees because we don't know. But I think we'll put it on the town website and, and the town Facebook page. We'll try to get the information out there. But you know, Greg, seriously, we, I've enforced this as a, as a constable and I've been at the transfer station. And it, it's calendar year and we give people the month of January as a grace period. Just because we're nice people and yet people think it does, it's not due till Jan, till February first. And I always explain nicely that, do you remember when the ball dropped and you opened the champagne and everybody was singing? That's when the dump station, uh, when, when the dump sticker is due. But people goes, wow, you know, this and, or, you know, we've had people that come in in, uh, March. I forgot, you know, and it just, it's painful. Anyway.
Okay.
Yes. Okay. Um, any other public comments? Diane still there? Diane Miller? You're there. I don't see you, but, uh, welcome.
I'm here. That's all.
Oh, okay. A stealth person. Um, okay, any, any, any other comments from the board? Yeah, I'm sorry, Charlene. Oh, you're waving at Diane. You're muted.
I'm sorry, I was muted. I was just waving hello to Diane.
Oh, okay. All right. Sorry. Yeah, she is. How are you? Um, okay, uh, public or, or, uh, board, any, anything else?
Got everything I was into covered.
Okay.
What was that?
Any issues that I had have been addressed already.
All right. I, I wanted to mention something.
I'd be disappointed if you didn't.
There you go. Well, it, it's actually a community announcement, but I think you'd be happy to know this. And I want to first of all, thank, if Crystal's present, I thank Crystal, um, for her help with getting stuff posted on the town website about, about this. The fire department held its annual toy collection last Saturday. And that, that's toys go to children all over, not only Woodstock, but other communities as well. They, we raised, um, eighteen hun- more than eighteen hundred toys were donated. That broke the old record by seven hundred toys. And ten thousand dollars in cash was donated and that broke the record by two thousand dollars. So significant accomplishment, a great community feel-good story. And they deal with schools and other organizations to distribute the toys to, to children. And the money, the cash donations are used to purchase additional toys. So it's going to make, you're going to make you wish you were six again, Jay.
I appreciate that announcement and, uh, I'm really glad to hear the, the numbers. That's fantastic. And, uh, I'm wondering maybe if it's a reflection on the way times are. Everybody's having a hard time and if they've got a little extra, they're passing it along, which is just a good, good comment about the community.
That's a good point, Chan. And, and actually it was, it was stated in some of the advanced, um, stuff that we did to promote the, the event, um, that, that this was a tou- going to be a tough year for many families. And so people were, were invited and urged to step forward with it. And, and I'd be remiss if I didn't um, comment on, on, commend the, the efforts to, it's a team that did the work. It's a greatly, a great team of, of volunteers. But led by Iris Arseneau, who was an E M T with the E M S Division of the Fire Department. She just is unbelievable, relentless in all the stuff that she does. And, 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 and she deserves really, really kudos for that. And the other thing that's worth mentioning is Sarah's not here now, right? Too bad.
I think she left.
Yeah, but we had m- m- more than two dozen guys, I didn't see any girls there, guys from the academy, from the football team, walked down the hill to the fire department and every single one of them had a mask on and every single one of them had a toy. They don't, that, that was impressive. Really, really impressive. Cool. Salute to Woodstock Academy, um, the student athletes that, that did that. That was wonderful. And of course the adult leaders that, you know, probably helped them get motivated to go do it. Coaches and, and, and all that. So.
I was very impressed. I saw Iris's pictures on, uh, Woodstock Proud. Uh, she had a lot of photographs. So I was extremely impressed with the records that were broken for the number of toys donated and also the amount of money donated. And as Chan said, again, I think this may be a reflection of the times. Because, um, it's amazing talking to people who, um, uh, people that have lost their jobs, been furloughed, whatever. And again, it all goes back to, to COVID, unfortunately.
Yep. Yep. So it's a feel-good story anyway. So we could end the meeting on that if you want.
Okay. Can I, um, would, would somebody, uh, move that we, uh, adjourn?
Sure. Chan, go ahead.
All right. So move and Greg second?
Sure.
Okay, I'll third it. Thank you all for joining us and, uh, uh, I, I think we, we did some good things today. Uh, some meetings are very mundane, but I'm, I'm very happy as is Dawn, uh, for what we're going to do with that farm. And, uh, I'm glad to hear Chan about the fire department and how successful that was. So. Okay, gentlemen and ladies, uh, until next time. And listen, all of you have a terrific Thanksgiving.
Happy Thanksgiving.
All right. Take care.
Happy Thanksgiving, everyone.